Prepared to start moving?
You're good to go.
All right. Meeting of the Township of Precipiny Troy Hills Planning Board for Monday, March 6, 2023. It is 7:30 PM. Announcement is made that adequate notice of this meeting has been given and that it is being conducted in accordance with NJSA 10-4-6-SEK of the New Jersey Open Public Meetings Act. Nora, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Didich.
Here.
Mr. Mealy.
Here.
Mr. Math.
Present.
Mr. Napolitano.
Here.
Mr. Stanzio.
Here.
Mr. Von Aiken.
Here.
Chairman Dinsmore.
Here.
We also have our board planner, Ms. Winter, our board engineer, Mr. Canziano, and our board attorney, Ms. Steinle.
All right, if we could stand and say the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, this meeting is open to the general public. Is there anybody here who does not have something on the agenda tonight who would like to speak about something? If it's not on the agenda, please. I seem to recall you've been here before.
I think I might have been. Maybe once. It isn't that long ago.
My name's Julia Peterson. I live at 25 Old Precipiny Road. I don't have to sign in? Okay. When we got home from a recent vacation, I was surprised to find out that the lot next to ours is about to be declared an area in need of redevelopment. This maybe shouldn't make any difference to most people, but it makes a big difference to us because our house is 300 years old, it's a national historic landmark, and whenever you live, if you live in a place that's empty next to you, whenever they start surveying, that's a bad sign. And I, we, this house, this property has been in my family since 1857. It's existed since 1752, so it's very old. And we are concerned about the future of what is going to happen. When my parents made the decision to sell what is actually the area in need of redevelopment in coordination with Rudy Olson, they were assured that research office zone would guarantee that the area wouldn't change much. Well, of course, we all know, everything changes all the time. And people around it, and the residences around it, the people in Marmora Road, the people in Green Hill, so everybody said, oh, you'll love ROL because it'll be empty, it'll be green during the weekends, your kids can ride the bikes on. Anyhow, it isn't, it wasn't true. And I remember when the property was zoned for garden apartments, and garden apartments were going to solve the ratables problem in Precipiny. And then ROL was going to solve the ratables problem. And now, apparently, any, any citizen can show up at town council meeting and present something which the town council will forward to you. So I just have questions. At the process of an area in need of redevelopment, council already referred it to you, so it's in your hands. Is there a notice requirement?
Was the study prepared? Has it been presented to the board?
I'm assuming we're discussing Planadex?
Well, yeah, it's a little confusing because I don't even know part of that property.
Okay. So it was referred here, I believe, two meetings ago, and the planning board has directed ARH to conduct a study. The study hasn't been completed at this point. So that would be the next step in the process of the property would be studied to see if it actually qualifies as an area in need of redevelopment.
And then if it does qualify, is that when people get noticed?
So before the area in need study is, the, once the area in need study is finalized by the board planner, then public notice will be provided to the property owners and...
Properties within 200 feet?
Not within 200 feet, the property owner, properties that are subject to the area in need and any interested parties. So if you would like to be named as an interested party, you'd have to go to, I think the borough clerk would be the appropriate person to make sure that your name is on that list.
Okay.
And then there will be a hearing before the planning board where you'll be able to raise your concerns on the study. Then that, the planning board's recommendations based on the study get sent to the council, and then the council makes the final decision.
Okay. Thank you. That's really clear, and I really appreciate that.
Julia, I don't mean to interrupt. The approximate date is August 17, or April 17.
April 17.
Yes.
Okay. Now, is it legit for us to ask for contact with the planners doing the study to help them understand the history of the lot? Which, it's very unclear exactly what part here, what part of this property is included in the study. But we've lived there, you know, for a long time, so we know the history of it. And may, I, you know, I understand that there might, it might be viewed badly, but it seems to me that it might be helpful.
So we'll also prepare a map that will show exactly what is included in the study area, and that'll be available at the clerk.
Okay. But the Eastlake School, which is immediately adjacent to this property?
Is not part of.
Okay. And won't have, that won't have any impact on the study?
No.
Okay. And the fact that there are going to be 2,500 people living directly across the street from this isn't going to have any impact?
No, we're looking just at that property that's under the study.
Do you have the lot block and lot number?
Not right here. I can look it up, but it'll take me a few.
Okay. If I leave you my phone number, can you tell me which block and lot it is? Because it's very, very important for us.
Julie, call the zoning department in the morning. Call the zoning department, or you could call me, I'll look it up for you.
Okay, great. Because there hasn't been, it was mentioned at one council meeting.
It should be listed in the resolution that referred the planning board to conduct the study.
I have never, there is, that copy, that resolution is someplace in the, in the, I don't know where it is. I've tried. Okay. So April 17th is the due date.
I can give you, it's block 226, lots 3 and 3.02.
3 and 3 point... Lot 3.
02.
It might come up as 3.2 on the tax map.
I've seen 9.2.
So it's not 226 lot 3?
It is.
And lot 2?
Lot 3 and 3 point...
But lot 2 is not?
Lot 2 is not.
Okay. This is what I'm, what's really weird about it is lot 2 is the building that's referenced in most of the coverage of this. It's next to the funeral home, you don't, nobody knows, but there's a funeral home there. And then lot 2 is the former Solix building. 226 lot 3 is actually fully occupied at this point. It's not empty. So that it's really, you know, it's something that really, really needs to be very, very clear. And I didn't want to start informing our neighbors about it until I was really clear. And I'm still not exactly clear. Okay, so we will just continue to pay attention. And I, I love this document, which is only two years old. I know that it's falling in disfavor already, but I love it because it really, a lot of citizens went into putting this together and putting input in. And a lot of citizens said what they really wanted the town to be like. And I'm not sure how many of us are really dying to have a warehouse next to our house. I don't know, but. Thank you. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for bringing it to our attention, and I hope it all comes out as it should.
Well, this week.
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
All right. Are there any other members of the audience that have items that they'd like to bring to our attention at this time that are not on our current agenda? Hearing and seeing none, we'll move on to the agenda. We're going to call application number 22.536, Ashatosh Desai and Stephen Buchert, 192 Condit Street, block 716, lots 1, minor subdivision with C variance for a two-lot subdivision.
Good evening, members of the board. Simone Cali, Cali Law, on behalf of the applicant's property owners. Good evening, everybody. We are here tonight proposing, as the chair just indicated, a minor subdivision of a unique lot that is oversized and irregular in shape. We are proposing to go from one lot to two, to retain the existing single-family dwelling on a proportion of that property, and we are proposing to develop the new lot with another single-family dwelling. In addition to the minor site, excuse me, subdivision relief, we have C variance relief that you will hear from in a moment from our planner. We have a total of three witnesses with us tonight. We will hear some brief civil engineering testimony, followed by, I'll call our project architect, who could show you the design of the new home. And lastly, we'll put up our planner, who will take you through the planning proofs to demonstrate that we support the requisite standards to obtain the variance relief that we are seeking tonight. And unless there are any preliminary questions from you, I would like to get started.
We have some waivers to go through.
Yes.
We are going to present, ask for some waivers here.
Thank you.
All right. So just a couple of waivers. The traffic study and environmental study and the landscape plan, which they did provide a landscape plan from the engineer. The ordinance requires it be from a landscape architect. We don't have any objections to any of these waivers.
Thank you.
All right. Is there a motion to approve the waivers outlined in the ARH associates' memo of January 5, 2023?
Motion to approve. Von Aiken?
I have a second.
Second, Didich.
Nora, would you call the roll?
Mr. Didich.
Yes.
Mr. Mealy.
Yes.
Mr. Math.
Yes.
Mr. Napolitano.
Yes.
Mr. Stanzio.
Yes.
Mr. Von Aiken.
Yes.
Chairman Dinsmore.
Yes.
All right.
Thank you. May I call my first witness?
Yes, please.
He is seated next to me already. Bill, can you please state your first and last name for the record?
Yes. My name is William Scott, S.C.O.T.T.
And board council will swear your name.
Will you please raise your right hand? Do you swear or affirm that the testimony that you're about to provide will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Could you please provide the board with your address and some background on your experience and qualifications?
I'm a coroner at Enser Plan. We're located at 172 Washington Valley Road in Warren Township. Enser Plan's been in business for, since 1985. It's been a family business, three generations now. I obtained my Bachelor of Science degree from Clarkson University in New York State. I obtained my professional engineer's license in New Jersey in 2004. I've had it in good standing since then. It's in good standing now. I have not appeared before this board, but I have appeared before approximately three dozen municipalities in San Francisco, New Jersey.
Are there any questions on this witness, on his CV? Hearing and seeing none?
Thank you.
Bill, did you or somebody under your supervision prepare the plans that were submitted along with this application?
Yes, we did.
Can you please take the board through the existing set conditions and then finish up with a description of your engineering segment, please?
Sure.
Thank you.
So the subject lot is lot 1 in block 716, and as we've heard, it's a, it's a very peculiar lot. It's an L-shaped lot which fronts on three streets. What we're doing is, it's an existing single-family lot, and it's surrounded on all sides by existing single-family dwellings. It's owned as a single-family residence. What we're proposing to do is to subdivide this lot by extending the common rear line of the block, which you can see if you look at the radius map on the top right corner of sheet 1. You can see in the block, the common line, the rear line is common to all of the lots in that block, and we're proposing to naturally extend that line and create two lots. There's an existing home on the property, and it sits at the corner of Condit and Hawkins. The lot that we would be creating for that home, which is to remain, would be 11,250 square feet, and that existing home would meet all of the front yard, side yard, and rear yard setbacks. That lot would require a variance for area and lot width when measured from Condit to the rear. Although it would, excuse me, it would meet the lot width when measured from Hawkins to Ball. The remaining portion, which would be at the corner of Condit and Ball, we're proposing to construct a new home. We worked with the architect quite extensively to develop the smallest home that still would function properly. And we situated that home on the property respecting the front yard setback from Ball and respecting the side yard setback from the adjoining lot, lot 2. That lot will also require some variances. There will be a variance for area, lot width, and building coverage variance. All the necessary utilities are within the roadway frontages on Condit and Ball. We're proposing public utility hookups. Stormwater would be handled by construction of a drywall, which would be piped by overflow into the storm store on Condit Street. From an engineering perspective, it's a fairly straightforward design. Some minor grading proposed to direct rainfall towards the roadway, not towards the neighboring properties. And more or less wraps up my presentation.
Thank you. I have no further questions for this witness.
Are there any members of the board who have any questions on this testimony? Mr. Von Aken?
Mr. Chairman, could I get confirmation that they, on a corner lot, if the, if the front yard variance applies to both frontages of the property, or if there's a side yard that's, that's permitted here? They've got side yard listed twice.
Mr. Canziano, did you have a?
Yeah, and there's two front yards, one rear and one side, by ordinance. And the two front yards need to be 40 feet each.
So then the description on the front page here of what the radius map is incorrect about which variances are required?
The, on the table?
Yes.
Maybe the applicant that testified.
I believe the side yard is, is between the rear of the home and lot 2, which would be required at 10 feet, which we're proposing. We would have a compliant front yard when measured from Ball, but a non-compliant side, front yard when measured from Condit. The side yard, I believe, is created by the fact that the lot is fronting on Ball.
All right, so in the table on lot 1.02, I see your variance for front yard because you've got, you've got both of them listed, the Ball and the Condit. And then also the building coverage, and the lot square foot, and the lot width. So that's four variances for 1.02? Okay. And then just the lot coverage for 1.01, correct?
Lot size?
Lot, lot area, right?
Area.
Yeah. Okay.
Okay. Gordon, you have to...
Yes. This may be a better question for your planner, so I apologize if it is, but what, do you know what the area is for block 716, lot 2?
I, I don't.
Okay. And how, and I guess it's the same for lot 20?
I'm, I'm going to have to defer to my, our planner. I don't have a copy of the tax map.
Well, it's on, it's on your plan. Isn't it the tax map on the front?
Yeah, it's not to mention, unfortunately.
You didn't bring a scale?
I did not.
I'm going to have to report you the PE board ethic. Kidding.
Um, let me just go over, so you have on lot 102, proposed lot 102. Measured from Condit Street, the required front yard setback is, how far? 40 feet?
40 feet, yes.
And the lot depth that you have from conduit to the side, to the, to the property line?
Is 50.
50. So, and the, and the side yard setback is how much?
10.
10. So you don't have a building envelope at all on this lot?
Not without a variance, no.
And then you're, just for the boards, so can you go over the actual sizes of the dimensions of the variances for the, that you, you called out for lot area? I think 15,000 is required, and what are you proposing?
15,000 is the requirement. We're proposing 12,500. I'm sorry, 11,250.
No, I'm talking about lot 1.02.
And that would be 6,250.
So less than half of the lot size. And then also for lot width, can you go over that too? What's required and then what you're proposing?
Lot width would be 100 feet, and we have an existing width of 50.
So again, about half, well, half. And we already went over the front yard setback, and that's 40 feet required, and you're proposing much, much less than half. You're proposing 16 feet.
That's right.
I just wanted to make sure the board understood the level of what you're asking. And then similarly for a lot, the remaining lot, 1.01, that's also undersized. You're taking a conforming sized lot and making it undersized. Is that correct?
Yes.
All right. Thank you, sir.
Any other members of the board have questions on this testimony? I'm going to ask now if there are members of the public who have questions of this witness on this testimony at this time. Hearing and seeing none. Counselor, your next witness?
Thank you. That would be our project architect.
Keith, as you're setting up, can you please state your full name for the record?
Yes. Keith T. Chambers, and my, it's P.O. Box 1058, Flemington, New Jersey, and licensed architect in New Jersey and Pennsylvania. And I've been practicing for almost 30 years, and I have testified before this board before.
Could you please raise your right hand? Do you swear or affirm that the testimony that you're about to provide will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Okay, thank you. And I believe you've been qualified before the board, before.
Any questions on the qualifications? No? Okay.
Thank you. Keith, you were somebody under your supervision, prepared the plans that were submitted with this application, is that correct?
No, I have, I...
You did.
I did.
Thank you. Please take the board through your proposed design.
Sure. First, I just wanted to show some pictures...
Take the microphone with you, please.
Sorry.
It's on already.
First, I just wanted to show some pictures of the neighborhood in case people aren't familiar with. This is the structure that's on the lot that we're dealing with. This is the house right across the street. I just wanted to show this for the style of houses that we have in the neighborhood adjacent, you know, at the end of the street, and what we have, you know, right across the street, just to show a couple.
And I don't think these were...
I don't think these were submitted with the application.
No, these were not submitted, so we'll have to label them.
We'll mark this sheet as Exhibit A1, and if you could just provide, let me know the date of that.
Yes. It's 3/23.
And those are neighbor, neighboring property photos?
Pictures, photos, yes. I'll take you through the floor plans now. Basically, it's...
Is this for lot 1.01 or 1.02, I guess it would be?
This is the new home.
The new home.
1.02, sorry. 1.02. We have a two-story structure. It's fairly small in footprint. We have a single-car garage, living room, family room, kitchen, and office den, powder room on the first floor. And on the second floor, we have master bedroom and three other bedrooms with laundry and master bath and ball bathroom. We're, first floor habitable space 732 square feet. The garage floor area is about 308 square feet. Total, we're talking about 17, 20, 14 for the total square footage of the house.
All right, I'm just, I'm just going to place something in context here. Is this what you're actually proposing, or is this?
Yeah.
For a sample of what it might be?
No, this is the actual, this will be the actual drawing.
All right, since we're only here for separating the pieces of property, the subdivision, you know, what, what is our power to hold them to it, as it were?
So there's no requirement for site plan approval of residential properties, but since the applicant will be requesting C variances for side yard setback, rear yard setback, and front yard setback for 1.02, I believe that's why they're presenting the floor plan layout.
Right. We're trying to present to show what will fit on that and what we could actually have there, you know, that will...
So in, if we agree to approve this, the resolution would basically fundamentally permit this and not much else?
Yes, substantially similar to that footprint.
Right.
Elevations of the proposed structure that we're planning to put here, and based on what you just saw, the floor plans, two-story, well within the, you know, we're allowed 35 feet, we're only, you know, at 23.15 feet to the required, so we're well under the 35-foot height restrictions. And two-story matching everything else on the block, only a single-car garage, clapboard...
How tall is it to the, to the peak sticking out towards Condit?
Here?
Yeah.
Well, I mean, it's the same thing through, throughout.
Well, you've got an average there.
Yeah, that's, that's what you're...
I, I understand that, but I'm dealing with a house of 16 feet from the property line.
You're probably another three feet taller, so 26 feet.
Okay.
26 feet to the ridge, which is 35 is allowed.
I, I understand that, but...
Yeah, yeah. No, I just understood. And then the last, it's just a rendering of the house on the, on the street, showing the trees that will remain and the scale of what, what is out there and what it will look like.
And this...
I don't believe this rendering was submitted as, as well as A2.
And this rendering was prepared by your office?
No, it was not. Karen Taylor, who's our rendering person that we use. No, it was not. Karen Taylor, who's our rendering person that we use. Sorry, I don't know what date it was, but-
We'll mark the date as today's date.
Basically, all, that's all my testimony for tonight, basically.
I have no further questions for this witness.
The members of the, uh, board have questions of witness at this time?
Mr. Meth? Just one. Um, given that you're asking for a building coverage variance, is it necessary to build this with, is it possible to build a house without a garage that complies with our ordinance requirement of 15% maximum building coverage?
I don't believe so, not, not for this. That would be, I'd have to discuss it.
If you speak into the microphone, please?
Microphone?
I'm sorry. I would have to discuss it with the, the engineer to see what you're asking. I mean, I'm not even sure what you're, you're saying, to fit within the building envelope?
Not the building envelope, but the coverage limit of the zone. So, the zone permits 15% building coverage, and this building is 17 point, uh, 17.04% coverage as proposed.
Right.
So, you have 6,250 square feet times .15. Could you build a building that, a reasonable building that has a footprint of 937.5 square feet or less?
I don't know. I, you know, I can't answer that.
You're an architect, right?
Yes, I am.
Okay.
I, you know, I don't wanna say sure we could do it, but-
Is it possible, I guess this is one question, and then is it possible for this applicant?
Yeah.
Is, I think, what he means, is it, is it, is it possible to build such a structure? I can't answer that. I'm not the architect, but we'd have to consult with the applicant.
We'd have to come up with some designs to see if it's feasible to see, you know, build it without, like you were saying, without a garage, and shrink it down to fit within the coverage calculation. I'd have to check to see, but, I don't know.
If you shrunk the footprint, you'd also probably trigger another variance, because we have a minimum gross floor area.
What's the minimum gross floor area?
For a single-story building, it's 1,200 square feet, and for more than two stories or more, it would be 1,500.
And the garage takes up 308 square feet? Okay.
Um, I wanted to mention, on that same garage topic, the ordinance requires two parking spaces, and what I wanted to confirm, or have you tell me where the second parking space is? You have one in the driveway? One in the driveway and one in the garage. Okay. That's where the two are for this, and we could, my client, you know, we spoke with him and said, we could do a carport, you know, in lieu of a garage, but to me, you'd want your car in the garage.
I was gonna say, you've got a room over that garage.
Yes, that's correct.
So that it doesn't, that wouldn't serve the purpose. I, I'm personally less concerned about the width of the house, including the garage, than I am about the fact that there's only a 10-foot backyard slash side yard setback. And I don't know how that fits next to, in the house next door.
Well, this, you know, these guys with the planner discuss, but this is a garage of the neighbor, so, and then behind this, there's, there's nothing behind our, you know, so we're, you know, butting up to their garage, which has no windows in it or anything like that, so.
Okay, fair enough. Fair enough. Other members of the public, or not public, the board, have any of our professionals have any more, uh, questions or comments?
Well, just going back to the parking, so what's the distance from the property line to the, uh, garage door? Like, you're required to have 18 feet, 9 by 18. We have 18. You have 18 right to the door.
Yep.
Then you mentioned trees a moment ago. The limited disturbance shown on the plan, I realize this is probably for the architect, but this is almost goes toward, uh, excavation requirements and foundations. Um, there's a couple of trees, 24-inch oak tree, um, at that corner, uh, by the garage, within 10 feet of that. Um, are you putting a basement in this house, or? Yes, we are. So you have substantial excavation. Those trees are shown to remain, but they'll probably have to be removed, because the root structure will be compromised. We'll have to check that. That's all I have.
Mr. Bonacca? Mr. Chairman, uh, so I noticed that, you know, the orientation of the house compared to how the setbacks are laid out seems to be a little bit off. So, the rear of your house appears to be what's, what's facing to lot number two, um, even though you're only calling that the side yard. So even though the rear of your property is, is effective, you're, you're using the side yard setback for the rear of your property instead of the rear yard setback, which gets you very close to your neighbor's property.
Right. He, he's 10.5 up to the fence line, and we're gonna be 10 feet to the fence line, so you have 20.5 between the structures.
Oh, okay, but, uh, one, we're not talking about their property. We're talking about yours.
Yeah, no, I understand.
And that one is also a garage, as we can see in your-
Sure, I understand.
Which is also much lower to, to the ground level than what you're proposing.
Understood. I mean, but behind the garage, it's open, there's no structure there that we're-
Well, it leads me to question whether or not you, we are actually are orienting the setbacks correctly, and we need to use the rear yard setback in its appropriate location, or your design needs to be reorganized so that it, it sets within the setbacks that are set forth in, in the variances.
We'll have to discuss that with the planner. We'll have to answer that.
Okay.
My, my personal opinion on this is that it's, it's matching the house next door. There's a front yard, you know, for the house that's here, that's already on the lot, and, you know, we could make, I understand what you're saying. We could make this the front yard, and this, but then with the size of the house, it'd be a long and narrow, you know, house. I understand that. We could do that, yes.
Yeah.
And we did look at that.
Okay.
You know, we had a front door here, and we tried to do, but it just didn't lend itself to, once you went in the house, the stairwell, you have narrow house rooms.
It's a very awkward lot, so you're gonna deal with awkward designs.
Railroad, railroad-style design of a house, you know, that's going back years ago, you know.
Shotgun style.
What's that?
Shotgun style.
Shotgun style, exactly.
We in the bayou now?
Yeah, yes, we are. Nollans, any, any other questions?
Yep, real quick. Uh, so, how many trees have to be removed to, to build this house on, on the lot that's there now? I, I counted six. Is that about right? Is that right?
Sorry. Yes.
And there are sizable trees as well. I, I, what sort of, um, stormwater runoff are you proposing, uh, so the neighbors aren't gonna have inundated with water, especially the house is right, I guess, I guess this, behind it is called, or side of it?
Question for the engineer.
Engineer, okay.
Engineer, but it's a drywall system.
Yep.
And there are gonna be, you know, meters into the drywall, and then the drywall's gonna tie into the, the street, uh, catch basins.
Thank you.
Any other members of the board have questions? Hearing and seeing none. Are there any members of the public who have questions on this testimony at this time? Hearing and seeing none. All right, counselor?
My last witness, Mr. Chairman, is our planner.
Good evening.
Do you swear or affirm that the testimony that you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Please state your name, spell your last name, and provide your address for the record, please.
Yes, gladly. I'm Michael J. Pesolano. That's spelled P-E-S-S-O-L-A-N-O. Licensed professional planner in the state of New Jersey. Business address 140 Elmwood Avenue, Lagota, New Jersey.
All right, thank you. And have you appeared before this board previously?
Uh, not this board, but many times before the zoning board of adjustment of precipinity.
Okay, and your license is current and in good standing?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you. Can you, oh, I'm sorry. Did you accept Mr. Pesolano?
Any other things you'd like to tell us about your-
Yes, uh, just briefly, um, the start of my career was, uh, when I was first licensed in 1983, as a licensed, I'm sorry, 1984, as a licensed professional planner. Forty-plus years later, still at it. Uh, really part of my career was more oriented towards providing in-house, uh, type of municipal planning services. Middle part of my career, I was working with a mid-sized engineering, architecture, and planning firm, uh, based in precipinity, uh, H2M Associates, pretty specific, where I provided, uh, oversight of development review services and other planning services for half a dozen municipalities, mostly in the North Jersey area. Um, and the latter part of my career now, uh, is what I'm speaking of, appearing before boards such as this, zoning boards throughout the state of New Jersey, as an actual planning witness, testifying, uh, on development applications.
Any questions on the applicants or on the witnesses? Bonafides? Hearing and seeing none. Your witness?
Thank you. Before you get started with your planning proofs, can you please describe to the board what you reviewed in preparation of your testimony tonight?
Gladly. Um, certainly the application materials. Uh, I was on board with this application from the start, uh, which is not always the case, but, uh, I provided, um, guidance to the applicants, uh, on formulating, uh, an application that made sense, uh, and an application that would, that would be, uh, complete for your review tonight. Um, but I did review the relevant proportions of municipal master plan done in class done in 2020, uh, township zoning ordinance.
Would you please speak into the microphone?
I'm sorry. Thank you for, for that. Did review the municipal master plan of 2020, uh, township zoning ordinance regulations, uh, as a price to this, uh, project, visited the site, uh, studied it extensively, uh, both in person and remotely, and, uh, informed a, a plan and opinion about, uh, does the application meet or not meet the criteria for the requested, uh, four variances that are before the board tonight?
Thank you. Um, can you please take the board through your planning proofs?
Gladly. I'd like to, uh, kick off with distribution of the planning, planning exhibit. I believe we're up to 8-3. Is that correct?
8-3. Could you please describe what this exhibit, exhibit is? Can you say a planning exhibit?
Yes, the photo, map and photo exhibit prepared by myself, uh, consisting of 10 pages, uh, presenting maps, aerial images, annotations on those images, and ground photos taken by myself.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Oops.
I meant to do that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Glad I brought my readers.
We have a couple of lectures, so we can hear if anybody has in the audience, so maybe you can just fill three. So A3, again, a 10-page exhibit, and it too informs this process of, by correcting and depicting the physical setting for, uh, the application and the relief that's requested. Just to summarize, we are seeking for C-type variances, bulk variances, another term for that, of course, uh, two area variances for lots smaller than the minimum 15,000 square foot. Lot area in the R3 zone where the property is situated, uh, a lot width of 50 feet, where 100 feet is required for proposed lot 1.02, the front setback of 16 feet, where 40 feet is required, uh, on the, uh, Condit Street, uh, frontage, there are two front yards for the, the lot, proposed lot 1.02, and, uh, a coverage variance of 17.04%, where 15% building coverage is required. On Sheet 1 of A3, I have highlighted the, uh, subject property. Um, it could be called a flag shape. It could be called a cleaver shape. I, I like the flag shape, uh, title myself, but you can see that it, it represents a, the whole end of, uh, a developed block, uh, fronting on three streets, actually, Ball Avenue, Condit Street, and Hawkins Avenue. An earlier question was asked about the dimensions of the two adjoining lots, uh, lot 2 and lot 20 in block 716. Um, I use my trusty magnifying glass, 'cause I can't see those dimensional numbers very well without it. Uh, it looks like they're 80 by 25. Uh, math gets to 10,000 square feet, uh, with those two dimensions. Both, both of those lots, 80 by 25, uh, by my observation.
You mean 125?
80 by, did I say 80 by 125?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
So those, um, those are the dimensions of the two adjoining lots. Um, another takeaway for me from, uh, this particular, uh, tax map is, uh, there on Hawkins Avenue, you can spot with your eye, uh, several lots that are, uh, of a narrow dimension, um, and also one on, uh, the north side of Ball Avenue towards, uh, Liverwick Road. Um, nothing particularly remarkable about them, but, uh, it's germane to, to the board's consideration, because this proposed, uh, 6,125 square foot lot would not be the only small lot, uh, in the general area. So with that, we can come back to that if you like, but moving on to Sheet 2 of A3, uh, it's an aerial image, and, uh, the approximate outline of the property is shown in the dashed yellow line in the center. I've, uh, indicated with, uh, wording, uh, the surrounding neighborhood all detached, uh, residential. Uh, there is a, a religious use facility on the south side of Hawkins Avenue, not adjacent to the property, but not, not far away either. And then, um, the commercial corridor on the north side of Route 46 is at the bottom. Now, uh, moving on to Sheet 3 is a bird's eye view, uh, type of picture, so that you can see some of the, the, the depth and the proportions of the, uh, buildings existing in the neighborhood today relative to the subject property. Again, uh, outlined with the yellow dash line, red balloon, indicating 192 Hawkins Avenue. And I flipped it around on, uh, Image 2 of, on Page 4, just to show, uh, in full the, the perspective, uh, to give the board a good look at what the property, uh, is today, where it sits, and what's around it. Uh, moving on to Image 3 on Page 5 of A3, uh, I'm standing on Ball Avenue, intersection of Ball and Condit Street, uh, looking southerly, uh, towards the undeveloped portion of the, the flag staff, if you will, if you call this a flag lot. Uh, that's a 50-foot wide port, portion where a new home is proposed. On, I'm sorry, on Page 6 of A3 is a longer view- On, I'm sorry, on page six of A3 is a longer view look, trying to capture the entirety of the lot, of the entire block front. Didn't do it all, but captured the front of the existing home at 192. That's on the right side. And then the undeveloped land to the left side. That's fronting on Ball and Condit. Image five on sheet seven of A3 shows a view of the side of the home directly across Condit Street from the proposed lot 1.02. That home fronts on both Ball and Condit Street. And the presentation shows fencing and nice vegetation. This particular home, going back to sheet one, no, I'm sorry, referring to the subdivision plan that Mr. Scott presented, there's a dimension of 25 feet for the front yard, the technical front yard for that home between that side of the home and the lot line fronting on Condit Street. I'll come back to that in a moment. Image six on page eight of A3 is a view looking northward from the northern portion of Condit Street, generally capturing the development tone that's across Ball Street, Ball Avenue, excuse me. Image seven shows the dwelling immediately adjacent on lot two in block 716. In other words, just to the east of the proposed lot 1.02. And finally, another view that is important, I think, to the understanding of this concept is image eight on page 10 of A3. And it shows more clearly the proximity of the brick home across Condit Street to the front lot line. Again, that's a 25-foot dimension. Our proposal on the other side is for 16-foot dimension oriented to the same roadway.
When were these pictures taken?
In the last, leafy season, last summer.
Okay, so 2022, sometime during the summer?
Yes, I don't know, I don't recall what month. It was early on after being engaged.
You take them yourself or...?
Yes, all the ground photos taken myself. I can't jump that high, so I had to rely on Google for the aerial photos that are part of this exhibit. You like that? Thank you. I'll take all the laps I can get. Okay, so planning proofs, important two parts of consideration of this application, everyone's consideration. Why would the deviations that we're proposing be warranting your approval? And for that, I would like to ask for your patience as I go through. What might get to be a little tedious, but I'll try to be brief and concise for everyone's benefit. We've already had quite a bit of description about the physical nature of the site. But one thing about this particular property that struck me early on is that, I said before, that the site occupies an entire end of the block. And it spans three frontages, actually. And typically with a block end, there is usually a structure on each corner. That seems to be the pattern just by visually observing as I drive through the area and look at it with remote resources, online imagery in particular. That's confirmed. Most block corners have a dwelling on them in the residential zones. And so this particular property lacks such an arrangement. So it's an anomaly. Our proposal, number one, would serve to adjust that by proposing a dwelling on the corner, as would be expected, and eliminating that anomaly. I also note that the existing dwelling at 192 Condit Street is setback farther than required from Hawkins, about 51.2 feet. That impressed me as well. And I'll come back to that concept in just a moment. We know what the sizes are, 62, I'm sorry, 6,250 for proposed lot 1.02. And the apparent lot proposed to be 11,250 square feet all from a 17,500 square foot single lot. We do propose, in addition to adjusting that anomaly of missing dwelling on the corner, we're also proposing a more, two more regular-looking lots. Today, it's an irregular shape in the shape of the flag. The proposed division line would carry forth a continuation of the lot, the rear lot line that divides the block in half going east to west and provide for two rectangular-shaped lots. In referring to the new lot, proposed lot 1.02, or the new lot, I call it that because that's the new change, the visual change that would be most noticeable from this proposal if it were approved. The new lot constitutes what I regard as the orphaned piece of the subject property. By that, I mean it's somewhat of a no man's land by virtue of a disassociation with the principal dwelling at 192 Condit Street. This land is largely unutilized, unmonitored space, by my observation. And this excess land above the minimum lot area on other type of lots tends to be more integrated and utilized, typically a larger rear yard or a larger front yard. It's rarely positioned at a corner on the entire block front as this property is configured today. I'll say, I'm pleased to note that the project conforms to the highest tiers of land use regulation. That is, we're proposing a conforming use, a single-family dwelling. We're proposing conforming height, as you heard Mr. Chambers testify. And we do have a conforming front setback on Ball Avenue, which I think is the premier street to respect the front setback absolutely because it has such a defined front setback line. If you spend any time looking down the front yards of Ball Avenue in both directions, either direction from Condit Street, you know what I mean. It's a very well-defined type of situation, and we were able to hold that. And that speaks volumes about the nature of the fit with that perspective along Ball Avenue. Makes for very nice integration, in my opinion. The deficiencies, excuse me, the deficiencies of area, width, and front yard on Condit and the building coverage are all intertwined, of course, with the smaller lot area of a new building lot. The existing dwelling lot is only short on lot area, but truly will not appear as such, again, because of the disassociation with this extra bit of land that's really not associated with that dwelling at 192 Condit Street. In addition, that deep setback I mentioned from Hawkins also gives the idea of spaciousness at that end of the block front. We have defined the relief that we're seeking in the application, so unless you want me to go over it again, I will not. But I will say that for the building coverage differential, it's roughly 125 square feet. If they were 125 square feet less building footprint on the ground, it would be conforming. That's roughly the size of a bedroom, by my estimation, 10 by 12 or something of that nature. So that's the magnitude of the differential with the coverage variance in this particular, on this particular proposed lot. I see elements of a hardship situation as well as a weighing analysis of benefits outweighing detriments in this application. More targeted is the C2 test, which is the benefits versus the detriments weighing analysis. But still, undeniably, there are C1 hardship components related to this lot. It's an irregularly shaped lot. Unusually situated excess land area away from the existing dwelling and at the block corner, and more land cannot be obtained to come any closer to the minimum lot area requirements. But only one of the two tests need to be found met by the board to warrant approval for the four variances. And I submit to you that it clearly meets all the criteria of the C2 test, which is a weighing analysis. So part of the test is to demonstrate that this is a specific piece of property. I think by virtue of the irregularities in the siting of the building and the stray land, if you will, we've clearly made a case that this is a specific piece of property. And there are benefits that I consider public benefits by virtue of the application advancing several of the purposes of municipal land use law, which I'll touch on shortly. The principal evaluation that struck me from the beginning and only got more solid as I spent time evaluating this application on a detailed level is that this is really a very classic case pursuant to the Kaufman case, which speaks to neighborhood harmony being promoted and created by the deficiency. I spoke to the absence of a building on the corner piece here. What we're proposing is a modest dwelling that's right-sized, again, my opinion about that, for the land area that's being allocated to it. Slightly over the building coverage, but well under the maximum lot coverage, I'll point out. So to me, it doesn't jump out as an overreaching, oversized building for its land area. Further validating that finding is that we do have adequate spacing, adequate light and air between the existing dwelling at lot two, which is the adjacent property to the east on Ball Avenue by virtue of conforming side setback on the proposed lot 1.02. And it's paired with an equal area on the other side. And as mentioned, that's oriented towards non-living space in the form of a garage today. The function, I'm sorry. So here's how I see the positive side of the weighing analysis, if you will. This proposal would be filling the block corner with dwelling, as is the norm in this neighborhood. It is reinforcing the strong conforming front setback line along Ball Avenue. Provision of a new home that is right-sized for the neighborhood. Anything but an overreaching project in its scale or massing. To the contrary, it provides an added harmonization of the existing development pattern by filling a quirky void at the corner. It introduces asymmetry with the short setback of the existing corner home across Condit Street. Again, that brick dwelling that I mentioned appears in a couple of pages of my exhibit, shown on page 10, if you want to find it quickly. That symmetry is defined as follows. At the intersection of Condit Street and Ball Avenue, two dwellings fairly closer to the street, I think makes a nice gateway into the Condit Street area, which itself is not as defined as Ball Avenue. But interestingly, the lots just to the south, I'm sorry, the dwellings just to the south of this corner intersection are 40 feet back from Condit Street. So it's like a narrow on both sides and then a wide on both sides. To me, that's what I'm talking about, the symmetry and the community form and harmony being introduced in advance by the physical nature of this lot and this proposal. As I mentioned, there's adequate spacing between the proposed home and the adjacent home to the east on Ball, again, in my opinion. Appropriate architectural styling, a very nice design. I commend Mr. ... Oh, gosh. I commend Mr. Chambers for the design effort, and my clients as well, to come up with a design that is attractive and a nice blend of styling found on the street. The proposal fills a disruptive void in the neighborhood development pattern. That disruptive void doesn't look too bad today, but if it's untended land, there's sort of an invitation for things to not maybe look as good. Filling it with a home and nice landscaping around the home, to me, sort of forecloses that question mark about what's the future of this somewhat unattached land on the subject property. A new home of a known design in the block corner enhances the neighborhood harmony while providing a modern, new, and compatible home. And that advances directly purpose A of municipal land use law, promotion of the general welfare. We're also proposing to use creative development technique to promote a desirable visual environment. That is towards advancing purpose I of the municipal land use law. It eliminates an orphaned piece of land and potential for poor upkeep that might detract from the superb quality of this neighborhood while also taking advantage of existing infrastructure and avoiding sprawl to accommodate the demand to live in a desirable community. And that is advancing purpose M, promote the efficient use of land. Purpose M of the municipal land use law. There is somewhat of an argument that this modest-sized home on this lot with the division also limits the potential for the excess lands associated with the dwelling at 192 Condit to lead to that home being made much bigger. And that would be a conflict with the neighborhood. And I noted that the master plan spoke very directly to that being a particular concern by many people. As to the negative criteria, two parts of that is a substantial detriment to the immediate neighborhood from the relief that is proposed, if it were granted, and is there any substantial impairment of the master plan or zoning ordinance for the municipality? I think that the impact is largely visual, but it is indeed a positive one rather than negative. Yes, there's no home there now. But I think that a home, particularly the modest home that's proposed and attractive that it is, is a right-fit type of visual for this corner for the next year of time. This setting is indeed appropriate for that finish. As indicated in the tax map, there are several other lots in the nearby area that have less than 50 feet in width. Several on Hawkins were 40 feet in width and less than 15,000 square foot in area. Yet they are individually and collectively neighborhood-defining assets. So the proposed smaller lots are not a substantial departure for this neighborhood, is my principal point there. Again, the higher tiers of planning and zoning are respected. This is not an intrusive use, this is a wanted use, single-family detached residential in this neighborhood. Adequate facilities are available to accommodate this new dwelling, parking utilities, solid waste, green edges that one would expect to see on a home lot. And this effect would actually be, I'm sorry. And the one setback shortfall is actually a harmonizing factor with the existing situation that I mentioned across Condit Street, where there's a 25-foot setback. that I mentioned across Condit Street where there's a 25-foot setback. This is a very small part of the overall zone, so to me, not tantamount to a rezoning, I'm speaking to the impact on the zone plan at this time now. I believe it is consistent with the 2020 master plan intentions to keep incompatible uses out of the R3 neighborhoods, to enhance and protect the character of existing R3 neighborhoods, and avoid disturbance of environmentally sensitive land. In other words, this land is a nice level of ready-to-build site, free of environmental constraints, and again, appropriate for accommodating single-family development, in my opinion. In addition, the proposed project reinforces the intended development pattern rather than undermines it. That, I think, is key for the Kaufman analysis. It creates the harmony rather than takes away from it. And again, this is a unique and unusual situation, but I think the proposed design fits very well. So in saying that, I find there's no basis for finding that there would be an impairment to the zone plan or zoning ordinance or anything on the magnitude of a substantial impairment. A new home here, meaning right on this particular property within walking distance of Route 46, is actually supporter of greener growth due to that proximity to the commercial area and the opportunities to leave the car at home from time to time. So all in all, this clearly utilizes an opportunity for an improved planning outcome. I don't find that the requested relief is overreaching. The benefits of the application as a whole, to me, clearly outweigh any detriments, and I find that the application does indeed meet the statutory criteria for the requested variances. And I submit to you respectfully, your approval is warranted. I'm ready for your questions. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm finished with this witness.
Are there members of our board who have questions of this witness on this testimony at this time? Mr. Vaughn Aitken?
Mr. Chairman, I have a few questions. Mr... Sorry, Mr. Pesolano. Do you know what the age of the home at 192 is currently?
I do not.
Okay.
But I think our client can address that if you want that number.
Okay. During your testimony, you mentioned untended land and poor upkeep as a concern. Isn't this property currently owned by somebody who has responsibility for maintaining the property?
Yes, and will be in the future, too.
Okay.
I'm saying this presents an opportunity, not a slam dunk that it will happen, but it's an unusual situation that, in my 40 years of studying property, sometimes land that's not really watched or part of a yard that's used gets forgotten.
But it is the responsibility of the existing land owner?
Absolutely, yes.
Okay. You also mentioned that this will prevent other uses from occupying this space. Seeing as it's zoned as R3, as you testified, what other uses could be applied to this space?
It's a minor point, but it's still a fact that it's a conforming use.
Not without variances or something else, though?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Mealy?
Our Mr. Napolitano asked Mr. Chambers earlier whether any trees or how many trees would be taken down by the Lot 1.02. I'd like to rephrase that and say, will any be left on 102 before construction?
I do not have that answer, sir.
It would be, if you look at the exhibit, your sheet, number 10, I believe it is, those are pretty mature trees.
They are.
You can see them go for this purpose.
They are, and while I wasn't here when the rest of the neighborhood was developed, I imagine other sturdy trees did come down to result in the residential neighborhood that's there today. So it does go with development, for better or worse.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Rath, you have...
You testified that there were many lots that were the same size or maybe slightly smaller than the proposed lot in this neighborhood, correct?
I said, I don't think I used the word "many," but did refer to several on Hawkins Avenue.
Okay. How about on Ball Avenue? Because this lot will end up invariably being on Ball Avenue, correct?
One lot towards the east end of Ball Avenue is undersized, quite undersized.
Yeah, I can see that on your exhibit that you gave us. It looks like it's the one closest to Bever... It's just behind the house on Beverwick, is that correct?
I think so.
So it's pretty far from this one site?
Yes. I'm not at all asserting that because there are smaller lots in the neighborhood you should approve this. I'm asserting that this is not the only situation where there's a narrow lot, yet still the neighborhood fabric is a good neighborhood despite those smaller lots being in the mix.
There is one other showing, it's not on his map, but is on the tax map, Lot 6 on Block 714.
Yeah, and Mr. Napolitano was kind enough to let me overlook his phone. I guess there's no building on that lot.
Oh, okay.
There's a lot, but no building.
Two of the lots on Hawkins are also one property. Or, yeah, one building on two lots.
Yes, and if I read his map correctly, it provides for an 80-foot width, which is, seems to be the standard lot in the area, potentially.
80 and 120, yeah.
In terms of the proposed house, given the orientation, do you think it would be more appropriate to have the driveway and front door and frontage on Ball instead of on Condit?
I don't think there's any advantage to that. What are you thinking that that might be achieved by that? I'm interested in your perspective.
Well, first of all, it looks to me like, just looking at the photographs you showed, that the house across the street is oriented towards Ball, as are others, in which case there's a fence along Condit, which gives the opportunity to have a 40-foot plus-or-minus backyard and a 40-foot plus-or-minus front yard, which is more, I guess, more in keeping with the rest of the neighborhood, as opposed to a 16-foot front yard with a door on it and a driveway. I mean, 16-foot front yard, I think you just barely fit a car on that.
We did, as Mr. Chambers pointed out, agonize over the orientation and the sizing of the dwelling, and came to the consensus that this was the rightest and best fit for the particular setting. If I can use the word "rightest," I know it's not a word, but that is where we arrived at the finish for this corner, as being best for all considerations. Could you make... Yes, it was discussed earlier, could you make a different configuration? Of course, that's possible, but is it desirable in the long run?
And the current property before subdivision has... Am I correct that it has no variances associated with it?
That's my understanding. Conform to the area, conforms to the minimum width, the setbacks appear to stay within the building envelope, as shown on the subdivision plan Mr. Scott prepared.
I understand that the building remains, but in its current configuration, it has no variances. But after subdivision, even the lot that has the existing house will not conform to the zone, correct?
Yes, by virtue of deficient lot area.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
But it's your testimony that that lot would conform to the neighborhood even if it doesn't conform to the zone.
Yes, we have that existing in the visual streetscape, if you will, from the corner of Hawkins and Condit. That's what you will continue seeing, that configuration. So I see no disturbance of the neighborhood fabric that way.
Any other members of... Mr. Stenzial, do you have a...
Just wanted to follow up. On our engineer review letter, we asked the applicant for testimony if the lot, this orphaned piece of, that you called it, the 6,500-square-foot orphaned piece, was that... You know if there's any discussions with adjoining Lot 2 on Ball Ave? If to have them purchase this piece of property, it would make their lots conforming in size. You know if there's any discussion?
I don't know if that discussion took place. But I will say that buying or selling offers are part of a hardship application for an isolated lot. This is a bit different from that.
Yeah. And to your point, how it's orphaned, it's part of the lot, portion of the lot that, you know, and the property, and it's... The applicant is the property owner. It's just interesting that they chose to maintain the portion of the lot on Hawkins and not maintain the portion of the lot on Ball. Just interesting how they, you know, they've owned the lot there, and they chose not to maintain the one portion of it, but maintain the other portion of it, making it look orphaned or untended, like you said.
Well, it has a different type of vegetative vibe, I'll admit that, but it's not collecting trash or anything like that. It is maintained of sorts, but not a manicured lawn set.
We do have ordinances that set certain requirements for how the lot's supposed to be maintained.
That is key to a good community, and that's good.
So you're saying it's maintained differently?
Yes.
Okay. Any other members of our board in this speech? Did you have any...
I have a question.
This one, there, yes.
To your knowledge, has it always been one lot? Or, I mean, looking at the surrounding properties, it's unique in its shape. So has it always been that way, or was it perhaps subject to the doctrine of mergers?
The mystery will rage on. I was quite curious, as you are tonight, about how this got to be that way. I do not know that answer. I do have response to the earlier question about the age of the dwelling, built in 1965, and there was no discussion about purchase or sale of the property. Thank you.
Okay. Any other members of the board or our professionals have any questions, further questions? Any members of the public have any questions on this testimony at this time? Hearing and seeing none, Counselor? Do you have a question? Please come up and identify yourself and ask... This is time for questions now. Good.
Chandu Guraniya, 98 Hawkins Avenue, Persipony, New Jersey. My house is right across from the current house. I'm also a professional engineer, and I've testified before this board a few times. So he very eloquently and cleverly called this an improvement. I applaud you for that, but I have a few questions. Have you looked at all of the properties on these two avenues, Ball Avenue and Hawkins Avenue? Honestly, give me that answer, please.
I have.
You have. You say there are, this is an anomaly because it's a corner without any home, right?
Yes.
There are four corners formed by Ball Avenue and Hawkins Avenue. There are two of those corners have more space than this corner. Now you know that?
Yes.
Okay, then you didn't mention that to the board.
The lots themselves have corner positions on the lots.
Okay, so there are two corners. Go ahead.
I was asking for him to be a little bit clearer to the microphone for the purposes of the recording.
How's that? Sorry.
Do you know that there are two corners on Hawkins Avenue that has more land than the land that's there on the corner of Condit and Ball?
There is a deeper setback, as I mentioned in my testimony, on the subject property that faces Hawkins.
Okay. So Hawkins Avenue ends in Summit and 46. Both those corners have more property on each corner than this entire lot. I just wanted to say that. Secondly, you mentioned that there is an anomaly because there is a corner there, but I think by creating this house, you're creating another anomaly. There's no such corner, what you're proposing, that eight corners formed by Condit, 46, and Summit. This will be an anomaly because there is no such corner with so many variances on one lot. Third point I want to make...
Again, this is time for questions.
Oh, I'm sorry. The question, I'm sorry. Did you take this photo yourself?
All the photos, except the aerial images, were taken by myself.
So that...
In my exhibit.
Okay. And at that time, would you please tell me what month of the year that was?
Again, it was sometime in the summer when the leafy vegetation was present.
Okay, thank you. I'm asking that question because the grass is overgrown and the property across, and property across that way, is immaculately maintained throughout the year. Anybody can drive there and see it. So those are the questions I had. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Any other members of the public have questions of this witness on this testimony at this time? Hearing and seeing none, Counselor?
Board, I just want to thank you for your time and courtesy in listening to me blather on about the planning proofs. It's a lot to wade through. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. What you heard tonight from the applicant was a thoughtful design with the intention of eliminating irregularity existing today at the property and complementing the neighborhood. Absolutely no need to summarize Mr. Pesolano's planning proofs, but shortly stated, this appears to be, in my opinion, a classic C1 and C2 case, and arguably, we have met the variance criteria, warranting this board to act favorably on the variance relief tonight requested. With that, I would thank you for your time and ask that this board vote to approve the application. Thank you very much.
All right, we're going to ask for participation by the public at this point in time. Are there any members of the public who wish to come forward at this time and speak in opposition to this application at this time? Is there anyone who wishes to speak in favor of this application at this time? If you could come forward, state your name and address, and be sworn in.
My name is Nilgun Karabay, N-I-L-G-U-N, last name Karabay, K-A-R-A-B-A-Y. I live on 79 Hawkins Avenue, Persipony, New Jersey.
You can take the microphone out if you want. You don't want the crouch.
Okay. So as I said, it's like, it looks like abandoned lot. So my thing is, if they build a house, it would look better, like cleaner, and my house would have more value to it. So approve, like approving it, that's all.
Okay. Any questions of this witness? No? Thank you very much. Any other members of the public wish... Yes, sir? If you could... Me? No. I guess there isn't that much room there, so... If you could take the microphone, please, and then identify yourself and your residence...
Yeah, hi, my name is Ruupin Shah. I own the property on 100 Hawkins. I just want to know one thing. This is R3 zone, correct?
Yes.
And according to my knowledge, R3 zone is minimum 15,000 square foot. Yes or no?
Yes.
Because I saw like a couple houses on the street is like a 40 by 100. Why is that? I mean, what is the, you know, R3 zone?
So some of those homes may be pre-existing, prior to the zoning.
Okay, so it's not one house. It's just so many houses I can show you on the street. So that means if I have a lot, 120 by 100, I can subdivide it?
You would not meet the minimum lot size if you...
No, I'm just saying, it meets the old setback. If I have 120 by more, can I subdivide it? I'm just saying, like, you know, all the lot, it doesn't look like 15,000.
You would have to do exactly what's happening here. You'd have to come before us.
No, no, no. My lot is lot bigger than this lot. My lot is lot bigger than this lot.
I understand that.
And there is no, I mean, this lot has a four variance on each lot. I have no variance, no variance. As long as the square footage is not a matter, I can subdivide it, right?
No, the square footage is every matter.
Why you guys not...
I think he's just trying to make the point that he's allowed to apply for it.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
You would be allowed to apply.
Okay, thank you.
Please feel free, if you could identify yourself and be sworn in.
Chandu Guraniya, 98 Hawkins Avenue, Persippany, New Jersey. One thing that came to mind when Gordon asked the question, this house, when it will be built on the corner where it's being built, it will block the view of motorist more so than it is now. And if you all understand the neighborhood, people cut through Ball Avenue. Everybody takes a turn on Ball Avenue when they don't want to go to the 46 traffic light. There's a humongous traffic during rush hour and at the same time when the buses and kids are standing there. And bus stop is right on their corner. So board needs to consider, is this improved from a traffic perspective or not? In my opinion, it's not. It will actually be a safety hazard.
Before you go, where's the bus stop at?
What's that?
Where's the bus stop?
Bus stop is in the corner of Condit and Ball, where this lot is, where this lot is.
Okay. Do you have anything else that you wish to bring to our attention?
Yeah, one more thing. So currently, the current house, if you look at the setback of the current house and setback of my house, which is right across this lot, the entire width of the lot is only five foot or so more than our setback. You're going to build a house in that setback? Think about that. Another thing, there is a, you know, the gentleman already, you know, already getting ready to get subdivided his lot, right? If you approve this, you're setting, you're setting an example for people like Rupin Shah to come and subdivide the house right behind me. That lot is right behind me. So there is a moral responsibility of this board, exactly stop properties like this. There is also an answer to why there are some houses that are very small. I did some research. I've been living there since 1991. My daughter was born there. And those houses that are very narrow, they were the first vacation homes for people who lived in New York. There was a Condit farm there, and when it became a street, few people bought the properties and built their vacation homes. So those were the homes when they came on the weekends or something. That's why, it was before probably the zoning law was in place. So now we have, today, fast forward, we have all the laws and all the guidance that you guys need. Please use it. Thank you.
Any other members of the public wish to speak on this matter? If you could come up and identify yourself and your address?
My name is Ravi Murupudi, 103 Ball Avenue. It is right across the new proposal opposite home.
I'm sorry, what was your last name?
Murupudi.
Spell it. Thank you.
So my objection here is like it is very next to my home. So current, like if I open my window door of my bedroom, it's directly going to that. And the zoning rules, it is very close to my property.
Please speak into the microphone.
Sorry. So, and I have another objection right now, the maintaining of the lot, basically. So, as it said that it is separated, but the maintenance of the lot is not at all good. So there, like always, the grass is always high. It is objecting a lot. And then we try to inform to the owner who's staying in that home. I tried to reach out a couple of times, but every time I didn't get a right person to inform me. So it's like not well-maintained lot, that is true, but I didn't see the right responsible person also to taking care of the lot, which is causing more mess toes and troubles for my home. It is next to my home. And there is no leaf cleaning or nothing. Every time, I'm the person, like all the leaves are coming to my lot and then I have to clean up the whole time. So lot of complaints about the maintenance, the current situation. I'm not sure how that can be happened when the new home come, how that is also going to be maintained. Thank you.
Is this, I'm showing him page seven, image five.
Yes, brick home.
Is this brick home?
Yes, 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 sir.
All right, thank you. Any other members of the public who wish to speak on this issue at this time? Counselor, do you have, oh, we have another individual who would like to speak? Yes, sir, if you could identify yourself and your address? Please speak in the microphone.
My name is Alex Payne. I was naturalized USA student in 1999, after I got my master's degree in computer science for NJIT in 1991. And this, I live at 114 Ball Avenue, and it was built new in 1993. And it was the gift my father gave me because my graduate. And I've been here 30 years. This is first time I actually stand up. And for the past, so many of our neighbors, they want to expand their house, they want to renovate, they want to build swimming pool, everything. I always think it's a good thing. It's always increase the value of their house, increase the value of the community. But this time, I have, I have to stand up because I think for all of us here, nobody wants to have new development only if the half size of our existing home. I'm glad that the last gentleman actually pointed out, like say, he mentioned about like, okay, Hawkins Avenue and Ball Avenue have a whole bunch of the smaller ones. So this one is no exception. This one is no, is not anything worse than those one. But here I've got on the stand, it is our homework. Let me just read some, okay. 52 Hawkins Avenue, built 1937, 5,000 square feet. 40 Hawkins, built 1943, 5,200 square feet. 31 Hawkins, built 1940, and 6,000 square feet. And 24 Avenue, built 1915, 7,800 square feet. What does that tell us? We kind of like look back 70 years ago or look back like World War II. And we try to say, hey, this is no different from back then. And I believe most of the neighbors here, we kind of shocked, and also we are curious, why such a small properties can build 20 by, similar to 20 by 45 feet, a shipping container size of the house on that small properties? And I understand the gentleman said, oh, okay, this is irregular shape of the properties. But unfortunately, we are not burnt. We don't have the burnt view, actually on the top, look at the map, see, hey, this is irregular. We look at every day, we walk there, we drive by, it's a nice, beautiful woods. If you look, if you guys look at those pictures, not from the, from the sky. We look at this very beautiful, nice piece of area, woods, quiet neighbors. And just like the other gentleman said, dark corner, every morning, rush hours, allow the car from the Beverick Road, make right turn east Ball Avenue, make left turn on Condit Street. Lots of the kids just stand there, school, waiting for the school bus. You can imagine if we have another houses there, it's not supposed to be there because that's not a lot to have a house. Imagine their car, the resident, the car going to park on the street. And you can see from the pictures, Condit Street is not that wide, it's not as wide as the Ball. It's pretty much like too land. Imagine sometimes the car on, on north side, the other side is going to be very dangerous, we think, because all our kids actually been there like 10, 20 years ago, you know? So, and we do think this is going to lower our house value, just like I pointed out those kind of smaller ones we're talking about. The average, Ball Avenue and Hawkins Avenue, the house value, you guys can look at, the average is around like 450,000 average. But those one I just mentioned, maybe just like 200,000 or lower, 300,000. Why? Because those houses get way too old and nobody wants to buy it. If you buy that small land, no way you can expand it. That's the whole, that's our concern. Like I stand here, 2023, 20 years from now, we can look back, we can see the house built new today, how much that house 20 years from now? I've been here 30 years. I believe and we think the current 192 Condit Street has been rendered out. And I believe if the owner actually live in the house, feel all the neighbors, feel the community, he might change his mind. So...
No, no, your points are, we needed to know them.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
You said you moved in in 1983, your house was built in 1983.
Yes.
At the time, was the R3 zoning at 15,000 square feet the requirement back then?
Exactly. And you know what? I, you know, this gentleman has very, very good question. That's the reason I bought the house. That's the reason I bought the house. R3 residential district is 3, 15,000. My wife said this is the way to go. And all of a sudden, somebody just slaying our face, yeah, 6,000 can build another house too. Wait a minute. If we knew this one 30 years ago, we have, we have a Fito Ball, I'm not going to buy this house. That's the whole point.
Okay.
Thank you everybody for your time.
Yep. Any other members of the public have anything that they would like to bring to this proceeding? Hearing and seeing none, counselor, do you have? Absolutely.
First of all, I just wanted to note for the record that the applicant and his team reviewed all of the board issued reports. There was a few intra-office memos that were distributed also. None of them cited any traffic or safety concern with our proposed application. My next comment is the property owner has heard tonight.
Miss?
Yes.
You didn't go over testimony, but my letter did ask for testimony on the dangerous intersection sign and the accident history and the history of the traffic impacts on the, on Conduit Street. Just to be clear.
Thank you.
And you didn't testify?
No, no.
So I appreciate the comments from the, from the public, giving us some background on what goes on there.
My next comment is the property owner here tonight has heard repeatedly that that yard must be maintained. So at the very least, please know that when we are leaving this evening, he will be alerting his tenant to maintain that property. Lastly, the beauty of New Jersey land use, and I'm really just stating this for the benefit of the public, is that each land use application stands on its own. It's very unique, it's a case-by-case basis, so this board knows that approval of this application would absolutely not set a precedent for other property owners to do, come before this board and do the same thing. However, they are within the right to come before this board and request whatever relief they may wish. But this, approving this application tonight would not set a precedent for other landowners in this area.
I must admit, I've been doing this for 33-plus years, and I hear that would not set a precedent over and over and over again. And it's only partially true. What it does is it doesn't give them permission to assume that it would happen.
I understand, and I don't disagree.
Fair enough. Are there any members, we do have one more person, I probably should have put it, but...
Jerry Shaw, 109 Ball Avenue.
Your name again?
Jerry Shaw, S-H-A. I moved in the Ball Avenue, 109 Ball, in 1989. And 192 Hawkins is the worst the owner maintained the property. About two months ago, the big tree falling down in the night time, almost, you know, when I drive through, almost hit the big branch. And right now, tomorrow, anybody can drive through the 192, the big tree is still there. About two, about, almost two months, nothing. In the summertime, the grass, very high, nobody clean. I don't know, I just want to mention it because nobody maintained the property and the big tree, very dangerous. And then, and then the daytime, the school bus is coming by, the big branch is over there. And tomorrow, anybody welcome to take a look? The tree is still there.
Okay. Thank you.
My name is Mustafa Sekmes, 79 Hawkins Avenue.
Uh, we're going to need...
You need to speak louder and...
My name is Mustafa Sekmes, I'm living in the 79 Hawkins Avenue, and Condit's 192 left crossed off me. I don't have any complaint, I don't have exception, right? But the problem is my neighbors. However, who complain about things? Why they didn't write the, call the town, why they didn't do nothing about it? My opinion only, each corner has a two houses, and it can be another house and will be cleaner than normal. You know, right now, like a bandit place, like he talked about two months, that tree is staying there, it's true. Lawn never getting cut, it's true. Either leaves coming from the tree to down, I'm cleaning my yard like 100 feet away to my house, I'm cleaning two, three times because they never clean up. I understand, but I didn't complain about it, like they didn't do that too. Why they doing now? Because like I heard, two, three people across the street, they live in there, like a house is like across to that. Some longest has it with the old other house, window can see each other, you know? My opinion, if they build it another one, I saw the picture, they doing the good building there, and it will be cleaner, very nice. We walking, everybody's, every neighbor walking every day there. With my dog, I'm walking every day. And my only question, I'm getting mad to my neighbors, why you didn't complain at the until today to the town? Did you guys complain? You all talk, nobody didn't talk, nobody didn't ask, that's why I'm getting mad right now, if they doing it, will be clean, very clean and the neighbor will be better.
What you're basically saying is you're in favor of this application because you believe it will make the neighborhood better?
Better, if they build, because it's true, whatever they say, they true. It's nasty, dirty, they never clean up, the lawnmower never coming, like a one, two years, they don't do nothing, like a wood tree, like over than 10 feet, standing there again. It's not one time, it was standing this time on Condit, before then it was on Hawkins Avenue. But now we can give them, give it to owner the attention to do next time better and build new ones and cleaner, because all trees, probably none of them lawnmower coming there because two trees in the middle of the places. That's all my attention there.
Thank you. Counselor, I've let others come, is there anything you wish to add to this? All right, so if there's no one else that wishes to come up and speak, I would say I would say this closes the evidentiary portion of the application. What is the will of the board? Do we wish to go into conference at this time to discuss this? Do I have a motion to that effect?
A motion to go into conference, Mr. Chairman.
All right, second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye, aye.
Any opposed? All right, who would like to start the discussion?
Is this in private or with the public?
This is right here. We're in, in conference, they can overhear us, but it's just us.
My personal opinion is that there are too many negatives to this application. I feel very uncomfortable, especially about the size of the property, the square footage which is required, but it's gonna be less than half of that. I intend to vote no on this application.
Do I have other comments here?
Mr. Chairman. Yeah, my biggest concern would be to setting up a precedent of the size of the lot. If we go ahead, then it will be a, something we have to live with for a long, long time, so.
Do I have other comments? Yes.
Um, you know, I, I know that corner, actually. And it does look like, you know, it's, it's pretty under-kept and it's, it's not very eye appealing. It's not very useful in the way that it sits there. I get, you know, everyone's, you know, complaints and reservations about a house going there. I do agree, a house going there would look nice. But, you know, maybe that, that the, you know, the current owner should probably explore potential other options, maybe talking to the other neighbor, that's an option. But I'm leaning towards putting a house there because it does, it looks pretty bad.
Mr. Math, you have some comments?
It seems to me the only hardship with this is the irregular lot size. And, and the, the sort of northern portion is not really buildable. So you can't really expand with the setbacks that you have into it very easily. Does, and I guess my main concern is that the new lot is just gonna be too small for the zone. In another zone, it'd be perfectly acceptable, but, and I live on a lot that's small too. I mean, I'm, you know, but I don't live in this neighborhood. And there's a reason why the 15,000 square foot minimum lot size was chosen for this zone. And I think, I, I understand the hardship and the, and the problem that's been created, the attractive nuisance that's been created, but I do not believe that granting this number of variances is justified on that basis.
Mr. Napolitano?
Yes, thank you. I do appreciate all the testimony from the professionals. I appreciate the owners trying to improve the land. Now, this home, if it is built, it's, it looks to me it's only gonna have about 500 square feet left of impervious coverage. So, I mean, a small deck and a small pool, and that's not much at all. I appreciate hearing the neighbors' concerns. It always plays a big part, I believe, in these cases. As a board, I'd like to think that each case we do here is individual and we don't set precedents. We have denied a case like this before and we've approved them. So therefore, you know, that's, that's not something I'm concerned with. But this case here, I think, has too many variances required and just doesn't seem to fit in this, in this neighborhood. So I would already known this.
Mr. Van Haken?
We always want to encourage property owners to invest in improving their properties and improving our town, improving the value of their properties, making our communities more attractive. But we can't just allow for spaces to be developed in a non-conforming way time and time again, especially with taking in a property which is, has no variances and converting it to two properties, both with variances and the one with four variances. And, and not just close variances, but some with quite extreme variances to, to the front yard setback, for example. You know, and one of the testimonies from the residents which hit me especially hard is that, you know, they made an investment in this neighborhood on the basis of having an R3 zone. This property impacts their investment in, in what some would say is a positive way. But I think the overwhelming opinion is that this is a negative impact to the community. And, and so as I brought up is with regard to the maintenance of the property, is several people have complained about. I'd suggest you do bring those complaints to the mayor's action line. So he's aware of it and potentially inform the police as well, as it's an ordinance issue. However, on this particular one, I think it's clear, I, I do not have a favorable opinion of this application and will be voting no.
Okay, well, I greatly appreciate every single comment made by every board member here. I think they're well thought through. I think that every one of you has, has paid attention to everything that's been said by the applicant and the objectors. I agree with the thought that you have what is technically a conforming lot, even if a bit of a hardship, but only a flavor of hardship attached to this lot. But it's conforming. And what we end up with is, are two lots that don't conform to the zone. I could be persuaded had we had two lots that are 125 by 80 that, because that conforms with the neighborhood. But this has got one lot that would end up becoming conforming to the neighborhood and another lot that is very much out of conformance with the neighborhood. And I can't see voting for it. I appreciate the efforts of the applicant. I think what they presented was a pretty good thought on what they could do to improve the property. And I'm sorry to have to turn them down. But it really doesn't fit in the R3 zone. And I, I think that it would not, uh, I, I think the idea that it, that it doesn't do any damage to the master plan is a little bit wrong. I don't think it does a great deal of damage to it, but I'm, I'm, I'm just not convinced that it doesn't hurt our master plan for the area. So I would be voting against. So, do I have a motion to come out of conference?
So moved, Von Aken.
Uh, the second?
Second. Paul Tannen?
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, Nora, would you call the roll, please?
Did each.
Yeah.
Neely.
No.
No, this isn't about.
This is to come out of conference.
I'm sorry. I didn't hear, I didn't hear.
I could just say, all in favor of coming out of conference?
There you go.
That's the better way.
There you go, okay.
So I hear, all in favor of coming out of conference, aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Would you call, do I have a motion to deny the application?
Mr. Chairman? A motion to deny application number 22.536. Ashutosh Desai and Stephen Bukert, 192 Condit Street, lot 716, lot 1, minor subdivision with C variance for a two-lot subdivision.
Do I have a second? Second, Paul Tannen.
All right, now Nora, would you call the roll?
Did each.
Yes, to deny, yeah.
Neely.
Yes, to deny.
Math?
Yes, to deny.
Napolitano?
Yes, to deny.
Stenziel?
Yes, to deny.
Von Aken?
Yes.
And Dinsmore?
Yes.
I'm sorry, but the application has been denied. I want to thank all of the public. I want to thank the applicant for making a good endeavor to improve this property. But thank all of you for participating. Thank you. All right, is there anything else that should come before this board at this time?
No.
Hearing and seeing none, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Anybody opposed? All right, well, you're adjourned, so ordered.